Let's do this. All right, we're live. Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we have Jess and Colin with us and Macy. Hi Macy.
Hey, hi Macy.
Oh.
She could eat you up.
So it's good to see you guys here. I hope that all of you who are tuning in, if you're joining in, joining us live, let us know how things are in your neck of the woods. Where are you in the world? We're always excited to see our friends and community members from around the world here on these calls. I hope everything is bright and beautiful where you are, no matter where or when you see this. Today, we are going to be talking about making some pretty adjustments to your site. And we'll get into some details. There is a resource bundle. If you are on the list, get oiling.com/weeklyworksession, you have received the link to that resource bundle that has got a Get Oiling page resource as well as two Canva templates that we're going to go over today. And just a little bit, I'll pop that into the chat here so you guys can see it and go to it in case you missed it. But make sure you're on the list, get oiling.com/weeklyworksession. We will send you out these links to things that we'll be using on these calls. When we have them, you will get the up to the minute, when is the replay live and all that kind of good stuff. If you're on that list, so make sure that you're there. So I want to see just a quick show of hands because we're going to be doing a lot today, but our main focus is going to be on creating a social link page. How many of you guys use Linktree like for your Instagram? Or maybe, or maybe how just, do you know what it is? Do you know what a Linktree is? See a few hands going up. Okay, so we know what it is. We may or may not use it. Okay, cool. So we're going to get into what that is and why it matters today, not Linktree, but what it does and what you can do with that thing on our Get Oiling platform on your site branded to you. Super pretty, super cool. And then we're going to get into some live site reviews. If you came here today looking for help, if you're stuck with something, if you're frustrated or if you're lost, or if you're, you know, can't quite get that one thing right, if you need our help, we're here for you. This is a live work session because we're going to work together to get this stuff done. So if you came here with questions, please head over to the Q and A. Pop your question in there. One of us will be helping you or all of us will be helping you with whatever that winds up looking like. So go over to the Q and A, add those questions if you have them. Let's go check out our chat here. Oh, wow. Hey, what's up Omaha, PA, UK? Oh, I'm sorry that it's cold. I hope it gets warm there soon. All right, we've got Linktree, heard of Linktree. Let's see, was told I could do it with Get Oiling, but now I have my own. That's what we're talking about today. Awesome. Well, cool, cool. What's up Tucson and Dearborn and more UK? What's up, everybody? It's good to see you here. All right. So today I do have a few slides, not much in the way of slides. It's mostly going to be demo. We're going to be kind of walking through how we do all of this stuff. So let's pop over there and we'll do that and then we'll do the live stuff. Okay. Can you guys confirm? Actually, wait, this is always so wonky for me. I'm going to turn my video off. We can turn our video off to get this nice recording for everybody. It'd be super good. All right. Thanks, team. Can you guys let me know if you can see my whole screen with the slide here?
I can.
Thank you, Jess. All right. So today on our Get Growing Weekly Work Session, we are going to talk about creating a social link hub using some fun new Canva templates. All right, so here's what we're going to do. First, we've got a training and a live demo. And then we're going to get into two member website reviews. We've got two folks who signed up for that today. And then we're going to have our live Q and A support at the close of a call. Again, if you came here looking for help, please go ahead and add your questions to the Q and A. Sometimes the chat can get a little wild here and we don't want to miss a thing if you came here looking for help. So go ahead and do that now. So today's training, we're going to talk about why you want a link hub or a link tree or a link whatever, and what it'll do for you. What is actually in a link hub or a link page? And then how to make one and brand it to you using the resources that are done for you and editable on Get Oiling and also with Canva with free templates. Super exciting, right? All right. So what is a link hub anyway? So one of our community members, Jess Doman, she has used this, right? This is her previous version and Linktree is like, it's like a site where you can for free get something that looks like this, or I don't know if maybe if this is a paid one, it's like six bucks a month. It's, you know, it's a little thing that a lot of people use to be able to direct people off usually from Instagram to different things that they offer, right? Because if you've, if you use Instagram, then you know, you can't just put links in your posts like you can in Facebook or in other social platforms. So your link hub page, which is, you know, we see an example of this with Linktree. This is something that, that you can mention it, right? When you make an Instagram post, you can say, hey, click the link in my bio about the wellness kit. And then they can go see the wellness kit or something like that, right? It allows you multiple places to link people off to. So this becomes the link that you put in your social bio and your profile bio so that people can have multiple places that they can go, right? It's not really very nice looking though, right? It's not really very interesting. If you know Jess or you've seen her brand, this looks nothing like her brand. It's not her colors. She does not like white backgrounds. Like this is just not a Jess looking thing either. But anyway, it's ideal for Instagram. It is a place to get quick access to links that you will be talking about in your posts. It is very mobile friendly. And also, as you can see, it's not really very customizable. It's some buttons. You pick the button colors, you pick what goes on them, and that's, that's kind of it, right? So why would you want to go custom? Now here's, here's a sneak peek, you'll see the whole thing of Jessica's link page or link hub on her Get Oiling site. So first you brand yourself, right? Because we want them to be going from links on this link page off to other parts of your site. And we want it to look like the rest of your site. We want a cohesive brand experience. So we're going to coordinate that with our website branding today. Also copyrighting. Guys, go back and look at this. Like, do you, do you feel compelled to click any of these buttons just because they're there? Right? You want to give people a reason to click a button. I know we are like, you know, we're, our monkey brain is like wired to push buttons, but we need reasons to push and follow through, right? So we want to add some copy, right, to tell them why they should be clicking and going to that place, right? Now finally, and this is a little bit more advanced, I am going to show you what this looks like. Lead generation. This is a page on your site, which means if it's a custom page, which this is, it can have a pop-up form that gathers name and email address and/or phone number in exchange for some kind of goodie that you're giving away to them. If you're going to be directing people off of your social profile over to a place where they can learn more about you, why not go ahead and grab their name and email address and make them a lead while they're there, right? We're going to show you how to do that today as well. Get those leads with a pop-up box on your link hub page. Now, this is not something that that other service can do, but you can do this with your Get Oiling account. All right. So what is in a link hub? We've got landing pages, right? This is an option. All of these things are optional. You do you, do what you want, put you want, whatever you want to have in your link hub. But here are some suggestions. First, landing pages that offer lead magnets. So a freebie, a goodie, a PDF, a video, or whatever it is that is of value enough to someone that they would give you their contact information in exchange for becoming a lead. Your Young Living signup link is a great thing to put here. A lead group link is a fantastic thing to put in a link hub. A link to your blog where people can peruse and read different things, maybe specific blog posts even. And then affiliate links. If you are an affiliate, if you're an Amazon affiliate and you have products on Amazon that you recommend or a storefront on Amazon or something like that, you can put that here as well. All right. So here's how we get this done. First, we prep. This is the recipe to avoid overwhelm using our system. Begin before you log in to Get Oiling. Here's what we do. First, I want you to gather your resource bundle and your Canva templates. We'll be putting links to those in the chat here shortly. They're also in our Facebook group. If you want to head over there, there's a post about this live call and it is in the comments, but you want to grab that resource bundle and the Canva templates. Then you want to grab the images that you plan to use on this page. If you plan to use them, you don't have to. And then on a separate document, this would be in a word processor or a notes app or something like that. You're going to gather the following, your links that you know you want to send people to from your hub. And then one or two sentences about each link that tells them why they should click the link and what they'll get when they go there. So gather these things before we start trying to conquer the hill of a learning curve of Canva or Get Oiling. Do this first and it'll make your life a lot easier in the following steps. All right. So your resource bundle is going to look like this. When you click it, you're going to see that you just checked the box granting permission to see that we have given this to you. And you're going to claim the bundle by clicking the link. You'll then see a pop-up that'll take you straight over to the page that you are able to start editing. Now, on your bundle page back here, there are two links here for your buttons, which we're going to be making in Canva, as well as the image that'll go on the top of your page like you saw on Jess's. So there are two Canva templates here. Again, those are linked on the resource bundle page. They're also linked on the page itself in a hidden section and you'll see that shortly. You're going to gather those images and copy. Remember again, if you're using six links, have six images, right? If you're going to be using the thing that I'm showing you, or I'll show you how to make a button that doesn't have an image attached to it as well, if you don't want to use images. But if you plan to gather them, know what they are, have the name that you want on the button, have the link that's going to take them to that place and then have your one or two sentences. Once this is all ready, you're ready to go. And all I did here, guys, is I just created a folder on my computer. I put the, the actual document here inside of the folder and then the images are here as well. All right. So let's get to work. I'm going to show you guys what this looks like, full screen. And yeah, let's stop. And what do you mean? I can't minimize while I'm recording. This is weird. Okay, let's try something else here. All right. I'm going to share right here. Okay. So guys, this is what it's going to look like when you claim your resource bundle. We're going to check yes. We're going to hit claim. And then you're going to be able to click right here to go over to your page that you've just downloaded. Now, what you see here is a custom page in Get Oiling and you have six buttons here. You don't need to have six. If you want three, you can just delete this stuff, right? Just delete them and you're done, right? Do you, what you want to have here is fine. There's no right or wrong answer. Okay? Now, what I want to call your attention to here real, real quick here is if you scroll all the way down to this section, we do have instructions on how to edit and complete this page right here on the page. Note that these are all grayed out right now. That means that when we view this on our site, you can't see anything that's down here, right? You can't actually see this stuff. So keep this hidden. And this, this can stay here with the instructions and it's going to show up fine on your site, just FYI. All right. So we've gone through the prep steps here. We've got everything ready to go. Now it's time to go over to Canva and make our edits, okay? And what we're going to do is we're going to create an image here, right? And that's going to look like this. So here's Jessica's. Let's show you what this looks like on mobile. We squeeze this down. So we've got Jessica here. We've got six links and we also have a pop-up where she's offering a freebie, which is pretty cool. So, so let's go back and stretch this out to where it should be and we will get to editing on Canva. So first, we're going to start, actually, sort of our circle photo here. This is going to be really simple to do. So this is that one that's up here at the top on Jess's page. So on photo circle, we're going to use this template. Just click that button. And real simple, you guys, real, real simple. If you click right here on the outside, I want to change this, this color on the back. You see this gray here? I want to swap this for one of Jessica's palette, brand palette colors. So I'm going to grab this pretty light gray blue color here. And then I need an image to go inside of this frame. Now anytime you see one of these sort of landscape cloud with, you know, with the green grass, gradation things. This is called a frame in Canva, which means that if you take an image, you can just slide it right over into it and it's going to crop it into the frame. So let me grab the image that I want to use of Jess, which is this one. Voila, there it is. And it's not quite formatted how I want it. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to double-click it. And I'm going to drag the corners just a little bit to make it just a touch bigger. And then I'm going to bring it down to center it, just until I don't have that gap at the bottom. There we go. Perfect. Click on the outside of it and there we go. Now to save this, and again, this is going to show up just like this on Jessica's page. To save this, we're going to go to download. We're going to click transparent background. Now, just a quick note, transparent background is a feature of Canva Pro for, I don't know, like 100 bucks a year. I highly recommend this as an easy tool for you to take control of your brand. If you are not in a place where that's something that you're prepared to do, or you just don't want it, or whatever, what I recommend that you do is either change the background of this image, right? So this white back here to another color so that it is the color you plan to use on the background of your page or just plan to have this page with a white background, okay? So download it. Again, recommend transparent background, but now you know the hack if you are not ready for Canva Pro or you don't have it. So we hit download here. And now we've got that image ready. Now let's go ahead and before we go over to the page, let's go ahead and finish the rest of our, our canvas stuff so that we aren't going back and forth, okay? So we're going to click use template and you'll see here that you have three different button options that I've made for you. Now, two of these are sort of these alternating sides like you see on Jess's. I wanted to include images on hers because I thought that they looked nice. If you prefer something that is a little more simple, then you can simply use this one that's down here on the bottom, right? And you can delete these guys or just not use them. It's totally up to you. Now, what we're going to do here is brand these buttons to us. So when you click this rectangle, you'll see up here in the top left, there are three colors that are attached to this rectangle. So I'm going to click one of them and I want to swap it out with some colors from Jessica's brand palette. So I want to use this peachy color and then I'll use that one there. All right. So now you can see the difference between that button and say this original one down here. Let's go ahead and take the frame, the stark color and make that a color that's in her palette as well. All right. So this is where we're going to actually reference our document that we created, if you remember. So I'm actually going to change my, my share up here real quick so you guys can see my whole screen so that you can actually see what I'm doing as I make these changes. All right. So we know that the first one for her is called Unjudged Motherhood Project. So I'm going to copy that and I'm going to paste it here where it says your text goes here. Okay. Immediately we see that this is way too big, right? Don't worry, real simple. What I want you to do is move it as far left as you can. Grab it, move it as far left as you can and then take this where the arrow is side to side and stretch it out until it fits. Okay? Now, we are going to take the corner of it and shrink it until it looks how we want it to. Okay? Now you have a lot of options with how you format the text here. You can see that what I did on Jessica's is that there are two fonts being used on these buttons. That's a really, really simple thing to achieve. If we wanted to say, we wanted to use motherhood in a different font, all we're going to do is to take this guy, I'm going to copy and paste it. I'm going to write motherhood here. And then I'm going to change the font, which is in her brand fonts, which is something that you can do. Something that you can do with Canva Pro makes this very easy for you. So here's one of her brand fonts. Actually, it was Brittany that I used, I think. Yeah, there it is. So yeah, pop that one in there, shrink the box down so it's not too big. And then I'm gonna write project here. Okay. So that's, that's basically it. You can change the text color. I'm holding the shift key down while clicking these different boxes here. That's how I'm able to grab them all. I'll make them maybe this color, this color, right? Okay. So that's, that's what that looks like. And actually, I think hers had a shadow behind it. So if I hit effects here, I'll give it a shadow, maybe in this color. And give her a shadow. All right. It's not really showing up too much. But anyway, so the next thing that we want to do, remembering that we want to put an image here. So for, for her Unjudged Motherhood Project, I have this picture of her with mama holding up her shirt that says mama. So what I'm going to do is go to uploads and I'm going to go grab that file. My link page file that I was referencing earlier. I'm going to take all of these, actually, I'm going to hold down the command button on my Mac and click all of these images that I want. And I'm just going to drag them over here to uploads in Canva. So now they're there. There they go. All right. So this is the image that I want to use. And remember, this is a frame, right? So I'm going to grab the image and drag it right into the frame. All right. So this is a finished button. You're going to repeat this process for all of the buttons that you want on your page. And then when you're ready, all you got to do, again, remembering what I told you for the circle photo, if you are not using Canva Pro and you are going to not have a white background on your, on your link page like Jess is here, just make sure that the background of this image is the background that you plan to use on your site. Okay? Otherwise, just make sure that you've got a white background on this page when you make it and this will be fine. So we're going to hit download, transparent background. And then you're going to take all of the pages that you are using that you have done. Now, if you want to have six of these, right? If you want as many as Jess has, all you have to do is duplicate this one, right? And then you would duplicate this one. And if you want to kind of see them in the order that they would show up on the page, then you can do it that way, right? So you can edit these to your liking, remembering that you will be dragging in the images that you want. Double-click it to adjust it in the frame. And then of course, change the text to what you want it to be. All right. So once that's done, you're going to download those images. And now we're done with Canva after you've got all of your buttons ready. So we've got our buttons done. We've got our circle photo done. And we've got all of our text right here that we know we want to include on our page. So from here, we actually go over, back over to Get Oiling to where we make the changes on this page, okay? Really, really simple from here on out. All you have to do is click. I'm going to zoom in a little bit here so you can see. Click the photo that you want to swap. Hit replace. And then you're going to hit this drop image or click. And when you click it, you're going to go to your downloads or wherever your images were downloaded to from Canva. And you're going to swap it out. You're going to do this for the buttons as well. Oops, I already have these uploaded in her account for what it's worth. So we're going to go and start with button number one. There's that one. And, and I'll show you like the full complete section. And then you can just repeat this for as many buttons as you have because it's really simple, right? So we've simply gone in here and we've replaced the, your text goes here button with the one that we've created. Now, there's two things that we need to do to make this button complete. The first is we need to add our text here. Why do we want them to click it? What are they going to get out of it? So I have Jess's text right here. So I'm going to grab it and copy. That's commander, Ctrl C on your keyboard, if you're using a desktop computer. All right. So now I am, I want to show you what I'm doing here. I'm highlighting this text. So with that highlighted, I'm going to go up here, top left, where it says more text. Okay? Make sure we are highlighted here. Click more text. Click paste plain text. And then paste what you have in your word processor right here and hit paste into document. And it's going to swap with the formatting. And I'm actually going to make this a little bit smaller of a text because it's going to show up on the phone. We don't, it doesn't need to be huge. We're like looking at my monster iMac screen right now. So this looks super tiny. It's going to look fine on mobile. So the final thing that we need to do is hyperlink so that this image behaves like a button. So we've got our link right here and I'm going to copy it. And then finally, going to go to my button right here, click it, look for this insert link button. Paste the URL, hit open in new tab and hit insert. Okay. So we've just walked through the entire process, right? You've got this figured out. You've got your first button done and you've got the call to action, the copy that goes beneath it. You're going to repeat this for all of the buttons that you plan to have on your page. So let's go ahead and talk about a couple of the other things that you're going to need to do. And if we can look at the instructions right down here, under create, we have added our images and our buttons. And we've downloaded them. We've swapped out the images. Oh, we haven't done our handle yet. So we're going to go up here. This is your, your Instagram handle goes here. So this is, this is Jessica. So I put hers there. You could also hyperlink this to your Instagram, your actual URL on Instagram if you wanted to, right? And that's just by selecting this text, hitting insert link and then putting the URL in here. You could do that as well. I've done that over here on her page. So this would actually click off. You can see where that'll click off to Jess's Instagram page. All right. So the next thing we need to do, going back down here, we've swapped this out. We've hyperlinked our button. We've swapped the text. Oh, and then finally, down here at the bottom, and this is optional. I want to show you something real quick. One of the things that we're doing on this page is as the settings are currently, the footer and header don't show. You have an option to change that. Jessica's footer on her site is actually really great for mobile. So instead of having all of the buttons at the bottom to connect, she already has these in her footer. So if you like your footer and it shows up well on mobile like this, then you can simply keep it just as Jess has hers instead of having the, instead of having this part down here. And if you want to remove this, all you need to do is put your cursor right here, drag it and just hit delete. Now, if you want to keep this, if you like this, then what you're going to want to do is come down and click on each of these icons. If it'll let me. It's not, it's not wanting me to do it. I think I am too, there we go. So we're going to click like on Pinterest, you click the icon, you hit insert link, put your Pinterest URL in here, hit open in new tab and then repeat that for your Twitter, your, your YouTube, your Instagram, your Facebook. If you don't have one of these, you can swap them out. You can, you can delete them. Totally, totally up to you. And again, if you have a custom footer, like the one that, that we've taught you how to do recently on this channel, then you could certainly leave that as well. And if you do that, then just delete this section. All right. Now, final touches on this, you guys, is to go up to our settings. And what we're going to do here, I put learn more in the title bar text. You do want to make sure that your title bar text right here is something that's going to make sense to somebody, right? So this is get my links or get my info or whatever, right? We want to like have something that they will see that will make sense to them. So if it just says link page, that's not going to look so great. Jessica's up here, if you can see up here at the, the top right of this page, it says learn more. So that's a good idea if you wanted to do something like that. Also, she has another one. This one is forward slash links. So being that this is a page that we are mocking up for the purpose of this demo, it's links dash one, but yours should just be links. This way, yoururl.com/links is all you need to do to share this. Like that's all you need to type in on your Instagram, right? So instead of having this, you know, Linktree link like this, you would have for Jessica, jessicadoman.com/links. That is now her link page on her social. All right. So you want to take care of your page settings up here with the title bar text and the name path particularly. If you have a custom footer and you love it and you want to use it, then click show footer. I would not use show header and menu here because what we're wanting to do is get them to take advantage of one of the links on the page, right? So we're not going to have this show up like our regular website. Again, like if you look at this Linktree, the reason why they made a business out of this is because having no options except to pick one of these links is effective, right? So I wouldn't put a header here. And then finally, if we want to get advanced about this, if you are someone who has a funnel already, you have a lead magnet, you have a campaign, then all you need to do is come over here to lead capture settings and then paste in the information about your offer. and then paste in the information about your offer. And you can use the same stuff that you have on your existing landing pages. You add the campaign that's attached to that funnel. You add the tags you want for that funnel. And then whatever the registration, the post-registration URL is for you, you'd put that here and give the button a label. Then I would have, when the visitor scrolls past 50% of the page, I would select this. And that's what's going to make the pop-up happen, right? So let me refresh Jess's page. And when I scroll, there we go. It pops that up for me. And so she's offering this. Excuse me. So she's offering this, and when I put my information in here, I will be directed off to a thank you page on her site if I wanted to get access to this affirmation training that she's offering. Okay, so let me show you what this looks like on Jess's site. Because again, this is the fully completed. I showed you sort of in progress. How you start getting there. This is what it looked like originally. And then finally, this is, this is where we're headed with this. All of the complete buttons, all of the complete text and everything. The way Jess's page is set up here, like I mentioned, the title bar text said "Learn More", the link path is "Links". It is shown everywhere. It's fine if people find this just out in the web somewhere. They don't need to be in a funnel to find it. No header, but yes to footer. Of course, it's published. And then in her Lead Capture Settings, we have this information here. She's got her affirmation freebie campaign for that funnel attached. She's got her tag for those leads. She's offering name, email, phone entry here. And then, and then she's got a thank you page down here. And it, and it shows up after 50% of the page is scrolled. And by the way, you guys, her directions are still here on this page. You just don't see them when we're on her live site because they are hidden, right? These are all grayed out. They're hidden from the page. Alright, so that's it. We have been through the whole thing. I'm sure y'all have all the questions. So let me come back over here and start video again, and we can start getting into what you guys think of this. Is this exciting? Does it overwhelming? Like, are you ready for the, are you ready for the link to like actually get your resource bundle? So you can get started on this. Alright, I'm gonna come over here in the chat, you guys. Here is, looks like, oh, you guys are excited to do this. Alright, I just dropped the link in for the resource sharing page here in the chat. Alright, so, um, let's see. I don't know how to pronounce your name, and I'm sorry. How do you hide the instructions on the website? They're already hidden. They're already hidden. They're grayed out on that page. So when you download this resource bundle, it's already handled. It's not gonna show up unless you click like the, you know, the phone or the screen or the whatever, and those become dark. Right now, they're light. When they become dark, they appear on the publish page. So if you leave them as this, then you're good to go. Oh, Angela, I love you too. I'll watch it 10 more times and then do it. It is, um, that hard, right? And just, just remember, the link to the resource page, it's gonna be, scroll up in the chat or look for it now because I just put it back in there. There's a lot in there. Can we go back to her website so we can see how we would get to this page? So, so Sandra, this actually isn't a page that people would get to from Jessica's website. But if we went to Jessica's Instagram, here, I'll show you what it looks like on her Instagram. Give me just a second. I have a productivity software that like stops me from going to distracting websites. So I've got like, I have a digital nanny because I'm that blue. How many of you guys relate to that? So let me let it do its thing real quick so I can show you her page. And then, there we go. Unblock Instagram. Thank you, nanny. Here we go. Is it gonna do it? Okay. I think I've got it now. Alright, so here is Jessica's gorgeous Instagram. You guys are gonna meet her next week and, and hear some really cool stuff that she's sharing. Jessica's a gold leader in Young Living and has a, a huge following on social and is just always doing great stuff. So there it is, right? So we're on her site. Let's go pretend like we're on mobile. We shrink the screen down and pretend like we're on our phone. Okay? Now, when we click here, that's gonna take us off to this page, right? So instead of going to this ugly thing, we're going here. Makes sense? It's pretty cool, right? That was a revelation for us. We were like, I think Greg was like, "Have you ever heard of Linktree?" I was like, "No, what's that?" He's like, "Here it is." I was like, "We can do that on ours. We could do so much more than that." So yeah, now we can get leads from our link page and send them off to wherever we would like for them to go. So when Jess shows up and she makes a post on Instagram about the wellness kit that she loves, it's the PSK. So when she goes and she makes a post about the wellness kit that changed her life, or she's talking about whatever, you know, she's like, "Oh, the boys are finally chilled out and ready to go to bed. And it's only 7:30 and I'm gonna enjoy this glass of wine or whatever." She's like, "If you wanna know about what I use to get them to bed this early", right? Or something like that, Jess, here's your ideas. You know, check out the wellness kit in the link in my bio. Now they can go and click the link in her bio. They see Wellness Kit. They go, there's the Young Living Starter Kit, right? Or bundle, seem to be bundle. Okay, so we have a few questions. How did you open up the template in Canva? So Jamie, on the Resource Bundle page, let me show you real quick. On the Resource Bundle page, there are two links. Here is one. Or there's three. So grab your Canva templates for the link page, the buttons here and the image here. So the buttons. Okay? And then the image. So those are gonna be right there on this Claim Your Resource Bundle page that's been shared with you. That also has, like, that's where you download the link page template into your Good Oiling account. Look at you calling Johnny on the spot in the chat. Okay, can we switch?
I'm trying. There's a lot of chat going on right now. I'm trying to keep up.
There is. There is. You're a busy guy. Alright, Tammy, can we switch out the frame, the cloud image on each "Text Goes Here" label? I have honeycomb on my site. So that frame, you can delete, like in that Canva, in, in that Canva template, you can put whatever you want inside the frame, or you can just delete the frame. Basically, the idea here is to create an image button that, you know, they're all the same, you know, width, and they're all more or less formatted this, in a similar way so that there's cohesion. You can make it look however you want to. If you like the footer, like Jess's example, will the icons already have my links as it does on my Good Oiling website? No. So you will need to swap those out with your links. So for the Facebook one, you put your Facebook profile. If you have other social media platforms, you might wanna create an icon for them in Canva and, and then link those, you know, following similar steps. So we don't, unless it is our built-in footer. So if you go to your Good Oiling site, let me go over here real quick. So if you go to your Good Oiling site, and I believe it's under Customize My Site, your built-in footer is going to have your social links already populated based on what you put right here under my social media sites. But once you go custom, you really have to make sure that you are linking those correctly because you can make it look and behave however you want to. And once you step out of the Done For You template that we have for you, we don't really get our hands in as a system and as a software into like customizing what you've chosen to do for yourself. Can you use from Facebook too? Yes, Carrie Gill, you could put this wherever you want to. You could put this in any social profile bio that you have, you know, whether that's Facebook or if you're on some of these newer social platforms or on LinkedIn or whatever. This can be, I mean, you could even, if you don't have your site like super custom yet, but you're really active on social media, make your homepage be this, right? And, and, and it'll just be your name or your whatever.com. And people can go straight there from your social, and then they can go off to the links that you have. This is actually a great placeholder for a homepage if you are a social media marketer. Where it says your IG handle goes here, do we have to do that paste text thing you just did? No, Jamie, what I would do there is just backspace to where the at symbol is still there, and then you just add in whatever your Instagram handle is there. Then select all that text and add a link if you want it to link back to your Instagram profile. I mean, they will have come from the Instagram profile, so like they could just go back to the app, right? If they're on the phone, but just in case, you know, if they're finding it from somewhere else, you know, or delete it, you know? You could also not have it. It's totally up to you. Totally up to you. Awesome. Great questions. Alright, so keep it coming. If you guys have questions, make sure they're going into the Q and A so that we don't miss them in our rowdy chat. So we have two website reviews today. Mercedes, let's start with you. Will you raise your hand for me, please, ma'am, so I can find you and we can talk about your site together? Hi, there you are. Welcome.
Oh my gosh, I'm so nervous.
Hi. Why? Why we're working together today? This is exciting.
So many reasons, but can you hear me clearly? Okay, good. I'll just, yes.
Alright, let's talk about your site. What's up?
Um, so I think, I just wondered overall feedback. This is way over my head, and it took me forever to kind of get like a big picture of what I wanted. And I realized with this, you really need to have a big picture first before you go in. Otherwise, you just get overwhelmed with like options. So I just wanted feedback on like aesthetics, how smooth, but specifically my member area.
Okay.
Check that out. I think that's where I would like the most feedback from. I just got it set up. It's not finished.
Okay, cool. So what else do, how are you letting people into your member area, just so I'm clear? What's the best way in?
Okay, I didn't know there's multiple ways. So I just invited current members who are in my contact list to enter the vault, and they just have to create like a login.
Okay. Okay. Cool, cool. Alright, this is nice. By the way, read your story. This is so powerful. Just, just wow. Thank you for, thank you for being brave and and leading the way with bravery.
Thank you.
Really wonderful. Yeah.
I'm learning that if you wanna impact other people's lives, you have to be vulnerable, which is not my forte, but...
You're not right at all, are you? Yeah, yeah. I hear you. I feel seen. I was reading what you wrote and I felt seen. Okay, ooh, I love that picture.
Thanks. I didn't take it.
Alright, so, uh, tell me about, what is? Karen Candor, okay.
Yeah, so I don't wanna make that my logo bigger, but Karen Candor is my company name.
Got you. It's great. It's a great name. Okay, so, um, there's not really, so you can make it bigger and it'll show up elsewhere on your site bigger, but like this is, like this is how big it's gonna be on your site. So what I would recommend, if you have something that's highly stylized like this, is that you either just use text just to have it say Karen Candor or take this logo and maybe stretch it out so that, you know, it's care and then that stylized ampersand and then candor. So it's, you know, more, more wide. That way, it stays legible even when it's shrunk down a bit. Okay, so, so you're using, do you have any custom pages on your site or are you just, right now you're using the Good Oiling?
So I created custom pages just for my member area, but when it comes to like my homepage and my landing, my landing page, I just took one of your templates and kind of edited it, but it's still mostly out of the box. And my homepage is 100% out of the box. I felt like my energy needed to be towards the member area first because I feel that that's like a huge foundation to helping my business kind of run itself and have a place for my people to go.
100% smart move. Alright, so let's go look. So that everything is basically in your member area then, right?
Yes.
Okay, so where are you adding? Are you using a landing page to let them off themselves in?
So no, I didn't even know that was a possibility. Um, I think on my, my, I think on my homepage and the menu bar, the very last option is like the community space. I think that's how, I don't even know how they're getting in there. They are. I don't know how. I do know that like, when I created it and invited them, I sent the welcome campaign. And so they had to create like a login, and I don't know, I didn't send the campaign to myself. I probably should have, so I know what they're seeing, but...
Do you know which one it is?
Which one what is?
Which, which, um, campaign? Like, do, do you know?
There was just an automatic welcome to a vault campaign.
Got you. Okay, that's, so for, for what it's worth, the, the already made welcome to vault campaign is just one message that just says, hey, here's how you come get it. Which is, you can actually, anytime you wanna see that, it's over in Settings, Campaigns, and if you search for Vault, it's really simple. And actually, if you wanted to customize one of these, all you would wanna do, do this welcome to vault campaign, just click Copy, give it a new name, and then you'll be able to edit it to whatever you like. So if you wanted to, you know, change, change text, change colors, you know, change whatever. But basically, this is just going to say, congratulations, you now have access to my vault, Karen Candor Member Area, to access the vault, blah, 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 right? So this is what they're getting. That's all.
Oh, cool. Simple.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's pretty straightforward. Alright, so here is the Karen Candor Member Area.
Great. So what I'm gonna say is, one of the hardest parts that I had to struggle, that I struggled with trying to get a big picture for my website. I'm trying to make all oily information accessible in American Sign Language. So I kind of have to dual-purpose all my information. So when you go to the Oils 101 course, that was kind of like, hey, I got my starter kit. What do I do? To make them feel like I'm with them and support them every step of the way, but without having to text or call or zoom them every step of the way. So this oily 101 course, it starts with a starter kit unboxing, but then every class, I have to create a class in English and then a class in ASL. Which means that every English person has to skip over the ASL. Like, I don't know how else to do that. But if you go to like the class, it's like English, and then the next class is ASL and then English and ASL. I don't know how else to do that.
Okay, yeah. So here's, here's what we do. Since you have, here, let's go back to your member area. That is so cool, by the way, that you're doing that. We need to see more of that being done. Okay, so what you do, and this is your online class, since you have, and I, I would make this consideration as well, if you are creating other, like, we, we have a lot of multilingual vaults actually, and sometimes they'll create an entire, like, here is English, here is Spanish, here is Belgian, here is, you know, right? So, so you could do it that way, but if you wanna have it all in one place, and you, you know, it's, you don't have a ton, but it's helpful to have it all there. What you do is for the class itself, right here, how students advance to the next lesson. Complete the, let's see, a lesson may, may be accessed in any order. Actually, you already have that selected, so you're good. They don't have to go.
To skip it. Like, they'll always see it, but they don't have to go through it. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So if you, if you wanted it to be more seamless, it's, it's up to you. I mean, kind of get the feedback from people who are using this and see, you know, kind of see how that's going for them. Another option you could do as well is to double up, right? So open that box with English. You know, you have, you know, you have English, and then further down on the same page, you can have the video and, and the ASL. Like, you, you can have basically just double up on this.
That would be awesome. I can't figure out when I set up a online class, when I set up one of the, when I set up a course, one of the classes, I can't figure out how to put more than one video in there because there's only one video link option.
Right. So actually, so there's, well, there's one right here, right? You see where it says "Insert Video" down here?
Oh, you could just put it in the content.
That's right. That's right. So hit Copy here, so, or Command or Control C, depending on if you have Mac. And then I'll go back to the English one. And you would just enter down a little bit, and then Insert Video. I know it's there.
Okay, look, ASL has a lot of facial expressions. Please exclude like that frame. That's not an attractive.
No, it's great. It's great. No, my, my daughter is, is learning ASL right now. That's awesome.
Okay, well, I didn't even think, see, that's the thing. I didn't even think about doing that. So that's what I would like to do. I would like to have them both on the same page so they could just watch what's appropriate to them. And then it wouldn't be junking up my class.
Yep, yep. Exactly, exactly. And if, guys, for any of you watching this, if you have multilingual teams, this is a great way to do this. Have, you know, English. And of course, if you need to, if, well, I don't know, I guess if, with English and ASL, I guess this is a little bit different, right? But if you, if you have, you, you have the option to have your, you know, open that box, you know, and then say, "Abre no kaha", like, you know, if, if you wanted to say, like, in different languages, you could also just put those all in the title. If you wanted to do English and Spanish and whatever, you could just put that all in the title and then have the additional, the additional videos.
Okay.
I mean, so yeah. That's how I would do that. That, that would make that a little bit easier to kind of get through because it is a little bit like duplicate.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's great. That's, that's one of the things I definitely wanted fixed, and that would do that.
Okay, so do you have access to the Move Your Groups course? Okay, so do you have access to the move your groups course?
Probably. I really am like, I, you don't even know, like, I'm way, um, ASL is American Sign Language. Someone asked in the, that, so I'm trying to make it in fact in sign language. But I'm like so over my head of this, so like it took me so long to do what I've done, but I'm pretty sure I do.
Okay, this right here, anything related to the member area, you guys, I know that this says how to move your groups off of Facebook, but it's also just sort of a definitive planner for making sure that you're setting up a Get Oiling based vault that works for how you want it. This course teaches you, uh, how to do this for a member education vault, like what you've got here. It also teaches how to do this for a builder vault, which is really very, very similar to this. Uh, and then also, uh, for a lead vault, if you wanted to have a lead vault. So this is at getoiling.com forward slash move your groups. It's free, it's comprehensive. It's got, you know, all of the, the downloady planner bits and stuff that'll help you with examples, like all of this. And you've got me guiding you on video throughout it. So highly recommend that you reference that. Because if you go in, like you said, like with a plan, right, if you know what you want, uh, then it's a lot less overwhelming as you're going through it. Uh, because I'm already seeing sort of, um, it's, it's cool to have like some of the really, uh, most popular Young Living products, like Nyxuret and Thieves being out front, but it's actually even more effective to kind of have a comprehensive resource. So let me show you an example. Let me see, this would be Jane, yeah, Jane's account. And this is the one that I use. Oh goodness, I'm not even logged into it. You'll see examples of it inside of the How to Move Your Groups course. But basically what you want to do is have a, here is where the sort of like administrative type stuff is. Like, here's how you log in and find your member number and place an order and all this stuff. And then here's product education. And here's all the product education and it's all organized and all that kind of stuff. So that's, um, that's kind of what you'd be going for there. And all of those examples are available to you inside of this and.
Did I have to go type in the link? Is this accessible from my account?
This is, no, so this is in the Get Oiling member area, but it is free. Like, there's no cost for you guys to get access to this. So highly recommend that you, uh, plug into this to just kind of optimize the way that you're organizing everything. But there's nothing wrong with what you're doing. I love this. You've got a monthly announcements page. That's brilliant. Yeah, look at that PB promos in here. Look at that Parallax background. You're doing it. This is nice. You're doing a good job.
I need to work on like branding and aesthetics for sure.
Yeah, but that's.
They're already members and they don't care as much. So I'm working from the outside and I'm working my way in, but.
Honestly, it's, it, you're, you're doing it right. Um, you're, you're working from the inside out. You're creating the value structure that's at the middle. So that empowers you and even more importantly, empowers your team to be able to go and say, hey, I've got access, like my friend told me about this oil. I sleep so much better now. And by the way, like she's got this whole encyclopedia of information that I can just go get. And this is really easy. And by the way, like I can make money on this. Do you want to look at it? Like, that's, this whole thing is, is actually something that's a part of your duplication system. So, um, it's really smart to build from where you are right now. This is great. You're, you're really doing a great job. I would suggest that just go through the, um, go through the How to Move Your Groups course, just to give you some insights on, on sort of further organizing for growth and how to leverage other tools and resources. So for instance, the How to Move Your Groups course, I highly utilize the, um, the Grow Workspace sways, right? So if you are, you know, in the US, Canada, or really, I mean, I've got, I've got clients and know people who are with us all over the world who use that, even if, you know, the education isn't necessarily available in their market yet. So.
That's all, if you click on instant classes, it should pull those up. Those are all of the sways from grow or go. I, I'm so good, like, I get.
Those are all the sways.
Premium membership.
This was a lot of work. So you're gonna see how, um, actually, you know what, here, I'm, I'm going to. Give me just a second. I'm doing this in another screen. I'm gonna show you what this will look like after you go through the How to Move Your Groups course. Got so much stuff on my screen right here, right now.
It was a lot of work. It was a lot of copy and pasting.
It's a lot of copy and pasting and it's still gonna be copy and pasting. So let's go to, uh, Jane. Members, okay. Okay, here we go. This is what it's gonna look like when you're done going through that course. Um, and there's a lot of folks who've been getting this done. So, um, so this is how I recommend doing it. And you're, you're actually quite close to this. We got monthly news and promos, you've got a chat room, you've got about the team, you've got education. Like, you're, you're actually intuitively getting this done in a really great way. So under oily education though, this is how those are organized, right? So instead of having them, like, you know, you click off and you go to a whole, I don't even know, or can you even see the page that I'm on?
I was just gonna say, I still see my page.
Sorry, I'm like in a whole other thing. Okay, here. Alright, so imagine it looking like this where, okay, so let's just say for instance, if I wanted to go see all things CBD, right here, we're going off to a sway. And now we're on a completely different site. Like, I don't know how to get back. I can't ask questions, whatever, right? So consider, and this is, oh, that's not what I meant to do. Hang on a second, I messed up.
Embedding it on the page?
It is, it is embedded in the class. So let me get back to it.
If you click on thieves, you can tell me if that's what you mean, because I did it on my thieves page.
So now they can ask questions about CBD right here. They can give their testimonials about CBD right here. They can get the text in class from CBD here. They can get the download from CBD here. And if you have this in multiple languages, or for multiple markets, you can also have those all inside of the same lesson. So that's something that you'll learn how to do in the Move Your Groups course.
Can me, can I see, I'm sorry, I know I'm probably taking more time than I'm supposed to. Could they, you go back on Jane's? And can I see like the structure of them? Yeah. Does she?
So this is. Yes, I put two classes in there and oops.
That would help a lot, I think, if I paid for an upgrade and got, was able to do more than one class.
You're, yeah, it's, it's a good idea to do. And if you are at a place where you don't have the contact volume, where it makes sense for you to move from basic to premium, just reach out. We can add vaults and classes to your account. So you don't have to do like the whole $20 a month extra upgrade just to get the thing that you want. So yeah, this is, this is how I teach it and you'll see it. It's, it is absolutely broken down step by step. This is what I do. Like, I make these for my 101 clients, but I teach you how to DIY this in the How to Move Your Groups course.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, you're well on your way. You're doing great work. Thank you for sharing with us today.
Of course, thanks for having me.
Okay, we have one more review and thank you for your patience. Carrie Gale, are you here? If I do, if you could please raise your hand for me, Carrie Gale. There you are. Nope, that wasn't you, sorry. I don't know what this one is. Sorry, numbers, okay. Alright, hi Carrie Gale, how are you?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, I can.
Good. Well, you're gonna have your work cut out for you today.
Okay, let's do this. Tell me what you would like to know.
I'm super excited because I learned lots just from you going through Mercedes and also what we did in the beginning of today. So here's my issue. So I run a business and then I do oils in my business, but that's just one of the things I do. So what I thought I could get away with was having a website with Get Oiling and then add my other stuff and combine it. But now I'm not so sure that that's working for me.
Okay, well, tell me about your business. Let's, let's, let's hear about that first and then we can get some insights into how you can structure things on your site. So.
It's called Transformational Health.
Okay.
And I do, so my background is nursing and I also have a bachelor's in holistic nutrition. And I do biofeedback. I'm a biofeedback specialist, a reflexologist. I do the raindrop massage technique and I incorporate the aromatherapy into everything with my clients. So it's all encompassing most of the time, right? So even if I'm doing biofeedback, you know, they're in my office, they see the oils, they're asking questions about that. And I'm talking about their diet, nutrition and their lifestyle. And so, I'm trying to set it up so that they can see both worlds, but I'm struggling.
Okay, okay.
This doesn't.
That's okay.
That's for sure.
So, alright, so what, what we'll want to do first is really establish for you, Gail, um, where are people? Like, how would people be coming upon your site? Where, where would they be finding you currently?
So I, I advertise a lot on Facebook. I send people there from social media. And also I hand out business cards everywhere and it has my website on it.
Okay, great. So when you are on Facebook and you're promoting and you're having conversations with people in person, what is the sort of call to action? When, when you're saying, go check out my site, what are they looking for when they go there?
Well, so right now with the pen, with the COVID and whatnot, um, and we keep getting locked down. I haven't been doing so much of the other stuff, but, um, focusing on the oils. So when they go to my Facebook page, if we're just talking about normal times, I would like them to know that I'm a biofeedback specialist and they can book appointments with me. Because then usually once I get them in and they're, you know, the diffusers go and they see all the oils and the products, they're asking me questions anyways.
Right.
So it's getting them through the door and I use my biofeedback to do that.
Okay, okay. And that's how it would like in a, in a normal, not COVID world would be, right? Okay, and so what, what now in the interim?
So now I'm trying to switch up and so I've started doing some Zoom classes and I started blogging with your, um, Get Oiling website. So super excited about that. Because I didn't think it was gonna go over well, but I can actually see how many people are opening it. And I know they're reading because just for this one alone, the April newsletter, I highlighted a product and three people are wanting to buy it. So the newsletter is reaching a lot of people and they're actually opening it. So I'm trying to shift how I function. So Zoom classes, the newsletter, so blogging and, um, I don't know what else, how else. I've been contacting people, um, five.
You've been doing a lot of work.
Trying, yes.
So, well, let, let me ask you this. Who, who is your, who's your ideal person?
Yeah, I don't have my bat signal down pat because, um, I'm finding it very challenging. I, I actually like to work with men.
Okay.
But I find that they're not as interested in the oils as women are. But when I didn't do the oils, so my, my biggest clientele were men, right? Because I worked a lot with back pain. And I was very successful. So guess what? Men chat you up lots. And so just by word of mouth, I had a huge clientele, um, up north. And now I've moved a great distance away, so I don't have any of my normal clientele. So it's like starting from scratch again. And, um, yeah, so it's hard to narrow it down who your ideal client is, but it would be someone, it would probably be a woman between 30 and, and 60, who is looking to have better wellness in her life and her family's life. And, and keen on learning, right?
For sure. So are, I mean, are you wanting to, are you wanting to, to find more in-person clientele, like the men you were talking about with the back pain locally?
At this point, I would rather, I would, I want to have any client.
Sure, sure. Okay, so, um, so thinking about that, right? Whoever it is, whether it is the woman that you just mentioned, and I would kind of zero in maybe a little more, uh, than just the fact that she's, she'd like to be healthier, she's interested in learning more. There are reasons why she wants to be healthy, right? So I would do some bat, bat signal digging there, uh, a little bit more.
I do work a lot with chronic illnesses.
Okay. Okay, so, um, so, so the idea here then would be thinking about, like, getting into the head, into the mind, to the shoes of someone with a chronic illness. What kind of information are they actively looking for? Because there's usually a step between them saying, I want to sign on to get XYZ therapy. You know, one of the number of things that you offer. Um, there's usually kind of a, a buffer in between of, of relevance, right? So this is, um, you know, managing, managing chronic back pain or, um, creating flexibility or, you know, just something that you know. It's probably a very obvious thing that you know. Um, and you said bat signal, so I assume you probably have been through Go for Gold or you're familiar with that, right?
Actually, everything you kind of, um, sort of go through with Get Oiling, I've tapped into. I have to really, um, slow down a bit because I think I'm spreading myself too thin.
That's a wise, that, that's, that's a wise realization. I would hold on to that and, and, and have, uh, first of all, congratulate yourself for all the work that you're doing. But in terms of, of how you're setting yourself up, I would really just kind of pick a lane and, and get really good in it before you start expanding out. Because that's where you can really start to overwhelm yourself, right? So what I would consider doing, and let's just go ahead and pop over to your site and look at this together. What I would consider doing is, is first having some kind of call out to your person up here at the top. You know, which is to say, you know, hey, if you're looking for this thing, you're in the right place. I'm here to help you. And whether that call to action that you have for them is to click contact and get in touch with you, or if it's to download a thing or get a video of yours or something like that, then that's going to be like what you want to have up at the top. And another thing that you could do, and this is just like for an, in the interim, because it sounds like you do have a lot of conversations that might be oily, right? Where you want to be able to just go ahead and point people over, you know, you're like, hey, go to my site. I've got information about oils there. You can do what we did with Colette's. Which is to just put a, a thin header right up here up top. Because she's networking all the time and she's talking about essential oils with people. She's at the doctor, she's in line at the store or whatever. And she says, you know, hey, just go to my website. Here's the card. Um, and then there's a link right here that says, hey, are you here for this? Here, go learn.
I actually looked at hers because she was on last week. I love her website. And that's what made me realize, do I need to just do one website for oils and then one website for my other business?
Well, so not necessarily, right? So just so you know, as you see Colette's site right here, this is not her sort of final homepage. We're working together on a, a sort of signature program for her that will be, uh, a thing that she offers and talks about in greater detail and what she does. This is sort of a placeholder for what it's worth. Uh, but we did want to make sure that it's functional for people to be able to go learn about oils and get onto the oils campaign, which is one that's already pre-made by, I think, I think she used Grow Workspace for that. She's got a page for people to get onto her calendar if they want to schedule a talk with her. And then there is a place where people can sign up for training and our members can get into our member area. So like, that's, that's it. Like, here's the hub, the resource, you know, and, and it'll change. This, this will change as her, as her offerings grow. So in your case, what you may want to do is, um, is have sort of your hub that's a little more simplified on the homepage, kind of like Colette's. But then you have a services menu. And then you have a page that talks about biofeedback, a page that talks about raindrop, a page that talks about reflexology, right? And then maybe you can have a booking, like, you know, book your appointment from those pages, right? So then you would have a services menu with separate pages for those things that you do. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what I would consider, just because all of these things are so, so deserving of, 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 of greater sort of expansion. You could also, if you wanted to, sort of, uh, treat this like a, hmm, an ellipsis, right? Where we say, this is a gentle non-invasive techniques that helps locate stressors and balance organs, dot, 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 read more. And then go off to, to that page, uh, so that they can maybe see a video from you talking about it, describing what their appointment will be like with you, uh, what some of the conditions are that it treats. And then maybe finally a call to action to book with you. And then you could have that on those separate pages.
Okay.
That's what I would recommend. And then, and then, yes, by all means, if you're actively having oil conversations uh, and you're sending people to your site, make sure that there's just a really clear place for them to go. They want to know about oils, go to my site. Look for the thing that says oils and click it.
Alright, and so when they do the, that, that takes them to another part of the website when they click on that?
Yep, it's another page. So this is a custom page where we've embedded, uh, a video from Richard, which is neutral, like a neutral, sort of, it doesn't talk about Young Living. It gets them curious. Uh, and then they opt in to get the, um, it is the Grow Workspace Essential Oils 101 Campaign.
Sorry, did you say the Grow Workspace?
Yes. Yeah, that's the Grow Workspace Essential Oils 101 Campaign is what we have attached here. When, when you say send me the class, that's where that goes.
Okay, so I have them.
Yeah, yeah. There's so many great ways to use them. There's so many great ways to use all of our providers.
I haven't figured out how to put their sways in my website yet.
Yeah, so there's, um, we have a couple of articles on that. If you're logged in, um, you know, click the little question mark button and it'll show you, uh, how to do it. If you search for sway, we have a couple of videos that teach that as well. Um, and just so you know, uh, there's at least one and soon to be a lot more funnels that are in Grow Workspace that you can just import straight into your Get Oiling account.
Okay.
So like there's a, they did one recently that was like gardening and oils or something like that. And you, um, you get it. It's already made. They put in their name and email and then they get to go to the sway and then they get a, like a journal download uh, or something like that. So they're actually funnelizing their, their resources now for us, which is really exciting.
Cool. All right.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's, that's, that's what my recommendation would be. And really consider, um, if you are doing, uh, education, if you've got classes that you're doing regularly, what I might, what you might want to do in that sort of call out to your person up here at the top is to say, you know, every week or every month, or however frequently you teach, I show up live and talk about this, that and the other. Click here to get notified so that you can join on a future call, right? That's, that's a great place to start. And then you just send an email out to them and say, hey, I'm going to be on Zoom on Thursday at this time and I'm going to talk about this topic. And, you know, and so here's where you can go to get it. And now you've got people who are being notified of your education.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I do Zoom calls, but maybe if I was more structured and did like every, or you know, every third Thursday of the month, then people would start to realize that and tap into it.
Exactly. And if you like Colette's, uh, page, that's basically what we've done right here at the bottom. Right? We've created a Canva image for her, join a monthly live call and you can get on the list to be notified. And she also has them for what it's worth. She's got in her live events, which is, these are good oiling events. Um, those are all listed and she actually has them, you know, multiple months in advance. So people can register for them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So you can be listing your events, uh, on your events page and Get Oiling or in your events manager. And then you could actually even add your, um, add your live events to your menu.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, good, good. All right.
That way we're giving away a lot of value upfront, letting people know that there's a reason for them to stay in touch, to get onto your list. So now you've got those leads and then even in that lead campaign that you have, with those people who are opting in, you can, you know, have an email message that goes out first. It's, you know, hey, I'm so glad that you signed up. Uh, I'm excited to share information with you over the next few days. I'll be telling you a little bit more about what I do and how I can help you. And so then one day you send out an email about biofeedback. Another day you send out an email about raindrop. Maybe you point back to the page on your site. And if you don't have it yet, then just make it an email. That's fine. And just drip that out over time. Uh, and so everybody can sign up for education, but then also learn more in depth and even hit reply and respond. Uh, you know, and, and have you respond and you guys have a conversation about how you can help them.
Okay. All right. Um, also I saw other people, um, the websites that you have done in the past. And you see at the top where it says my name, Carrie Gale Roy Jansen. They have really fancy names there, like they've, their first name is done one way and their second name is done in another way. And, you know, in a, like, yeah. How did you do that?
So that is under customize my site. That's a logo. So this is actually an image.
And did it, were you just making that in, um, Canva?
That's made in Canva. That's right.
Okay.
Yep. There was, um, I believe it was over the holiday last, uh, like, uh, over the new year or trying to remember. It's on our YouTube channel. We do have several videos on here, a series of videos that actually teach you how to brand your sites. And here we go. How to brand your good oiling site and a brand guideline and name, guideline and name logo. These two right here. I, I think I actually give a template in the description of these for Canva that you can use to create yours. And then I show you how to upload it to your good oiling site.
So personal branding, part one and two.
Mm hmm. Yep. Personal branding for young living distributors is going to be the name. So yeah, if you go over to, uh, youtube.com forward slash Get Oiling and you search right here for branding. There are these first two that show up here.
Okay. All right.
Awesome. Well, I'm excited to see what you do with this, Carrie Gale. And I, uh, I hope that you are proud of the work that you've done because you've done a lot of really great work.
Well, there's still lots to do, that's for sure.
There's always lots to do. So don't want that bug you. We're always doing more.
So I wasn't able to write as fast as you spoke just now. When does this replay come out?
Uh, it'll be emailed to you today. It's always the same day.
Okay. Watch it again and take better notes, but thank you so much. I got lots to, to work on and I'm super excited about it.
Well, great work, Carrie Gale. Look forward to seeing what you do with this in the future.
Yeah, thanks.
Sure thing. All right, you guys got a couple of questions left in the chats or in the Q and A. If you have it in the chat, please go ahead and put it in the Q and A. So I don't miss you before we get going. You know, we're going a little long today. So thank you all for sticking out. Um, okay, Estrella, uh, I'm sorry, I might've missed this. How do we share or add to Instagram through Linktree? So once you have your page set up, so ideally that's going to be yourname.com or yourgetoilingaddress.com forward slash links. You're going to put that in the bio section of your Instagram or other social media. So, um, whatever that looks like, I don't, I don't remember the last time I updated my Instagram. So if you go to your profile on Instagram and you're editing it and where you can put in like, here's my blah, blah, blah. I live here. I have this many kids. I'm into this and that. That's where you're going to paste that link, your URL.com forward slash links. Um, if you're using what we created today. And if you, um, like, if you look at your URL, you can just remove page from it and just have your URL.com forward slash whatever that in might be. If you want it to say Instagram, you could do that too, or IG. It's up to you. Okay, Jamie, I purchased an education tool, scripts and graphics designed for Facebook groups, but I'm wondering if I could recreate the Facebook group feel on my website and member vaults. Is there a video training like this one we are doing about something I described? Yes, yes, yes. GetOiling.com forward slash move your groups. You can use whatever you want to plug in there. And I give examples. So if you have stuff that's pre-written and like pre-pretty, you're going to get that done so much faster. You don't have to make it. So, um, it walks you through the design process, the planning process and the actual setup and implementation as well as the launch. So if it's for your members, how do you get them in? How do you make a landing page that people can get in and it's only the people that you want to get in, um, that kind of thing? The only thing that that course doesn't cover is taking payments for vaults, which is a totally separate topic. So everything that is meant to be for free or gated, that is going to be inside of, uh, GetOiling.com forward slash move your groups. Carol, question about the editor when writing an email and adding in the product link where we can add in the sponsor and roller, it ends up being a long link. Is it a good idea to convert this to a shortener bitly? Uh, it seems to work when I've tested an email, but is it a good idea from an IT point of view? So Carol, what you do when you see that link populated, that great big long link, copy it. And then all you have to do is say, if you want to try this product or whatever you want to say, click here. Highlight, click here, using the link that I showed you guys, that little link, uh, image in the editor menu, click that. And it'll pop it up and you put the URL right there, that real long link you can put there. Click open in new tab, click insert. And now instead of having that crazy long link, it's just going to say, click here and they'll be able to click, click here and it'll go where you want them to go. So hyperlink that text. And, uh, we do have, we've, we have like, that, that's in the, uh, Levio articles, right, guys? Like to like hyperlink a text. Thank you. Okay. Exciting and overwhelming. Are the Get Grind videos past classes? Can I access them on your site? Glad you're here, Cynthia. I hope you don't get overwhelmed, one thing at a time. Uh, if you go to youtube.com forward slash Get Oiling, there's tons of videos. They are all recordings of these live sessions going back years. So search for what you're looking for. Please don't start at the beginning. There's way too much. So type in what you're looking for. And if you want to get something done even more quickly, look for that little question mark when you're logged into your Good Oiling dashboard. Type in what you want to find out there. It's really important that you do that because it not only is going to help you get to a concise answer for what you're looking for, but if one doesn't exist, we're able to see it and we can help make more of those articles to help you guys get your answers more quickly than trying to fish through YouTube and watch hours and hours of videos. So please check that out first. Okay, let's see one more. Carrie Gale, do you have more courses like your mover groups that we should be aware of? Uh, yes, yes. Um, should be, is, is, uh, it's kind of the question mark, though. It kind of depends on where you're at and what you're looking for. Carrie Gale, as we're talking about vaults, um, if you are trying to create courses, like with vaults that people pay to get into or coaching programs, people would pay to get into. We do have a more advanced course that is taught on our attractwell platform, which guys is basically Get Oiling without the magic stuff for young living people. Uh, and, uh, that is, um, you can reach out to us about that. It's going to be a little, um, it's a little more advanced, basically. Like if you're someone who is making paid courses and that kind of thing, or you wanting to, then that's, um, that's what you're going to want to look at where that's concerned. But otherwise, yeah, I mean, everything is in our Get Oiling, uh, member area. That's GetOiling.com forward slash members. Uh, and you can see everything that's available there. We have mini courses and of course, how to move your groups is, uh, really, I think, one of the best reviewed courses I've ever created and you guys are loving it. So, um, if you guys want to let people know about how awesome your member area is now, since you've been through that or whatever else you've done, go ahead and put that in the chat. I know I was really excited to see all the amazing work you guys have been doing in there. So. Okay. Well, cool. We did this for a long time today.
How you feeling?
This is, this is my first coffee, so there's that. Awesome. I'm really, really glad you guys were able to make it here today. It looks like we have a lot of, a lot of new faces on the work session today. Uh, we usually try to make this, you know, end at an hour, but sometimes you just need to level a little more and do a little more. And that's okay. So, um, if you guys want to sign up for a website review of your own, if you want hands, hands-on help, and it's okay if you haven't even started making a site yet, you just want help making sense of this and you just need hand help, handholding live. Sign up, GetOiling.com forward slash website review. And you can get onto a call. We can talk together. We can talk about your strategy. We can help you make sense of all of this. And of course, we look forward to seeing you on a future call and all the amazing work you do. Everybody loves how cute Colin's baby is. Seeing this in the chat, there she is. Hi, sweet girl.
Hi there, everybody. No.
Okay. All right. So, uh, safe travels to Greg and Amanda who are on the road, hopefully to somewhere fun. I think they are going somewhere fun, Jess. You guys have a, a great time this weekend and you guys, uh, come back next week. GetOiling.com forward slash weekly work session. Uh, we're going to have Jessica Doman with us next week and she's going to be sharing some of her secrets. And that's really exciting because girl's got a massive following on social media and she has two kids that are tiny and she gets everything done in like three hours a week. So I even want to know what she does. You guys, make sure you come back for that. We'll see you then.
I'm pretty interested in that personally as well.
All right. Bye, guys.
Bye, everyone.